Well, sometimes circumstance don't work out. We'll call the meeting to order. This is, thanks for everybody being here and I think this is an important part of the process that we do as a board of mayor and alderman is to review our capital projects and also review our guidelines that we've developed as far as our finances and we have our experts here today. So, do you and Russ want to say anything?
I'll say a couple words of introduction. Invite Lauren up and anybody else who wants to come up, David, if you'd like to come up too, that'd be great. What we'd like to do today is go over where we are with not just the priorities that you had worked on earlier in the year, but we're trying to bring that together with the financial model and the various components that the board built into your policies related to reserves and debt policy. So, what we'd like to do is go back through that, kind of refresh all of our memories about those policies and how they fit together and then we pick the series of priorities based on our discussion that will show how those groups of projects roll through those different financial components and give you a sense of what that looks like. Today is really to just have that discussion and see what else you would need to look at in terms of are there additional options, is there additional work that you would like us to do to help work through this process. So, this is reflective of the prioritization and then brings in this funding capacity model to show not only what we would like to do, but what we can afford to do compared to our policy and then give you an opportunity to give us feedback and tell us how we can fill in any gaps and work through this process going forward. And we'd like to introduce Lauren, who is actually here in person.
Yeah.
We've gotten so used to having her by teleconference that it's almost surprising to have her here in person, but it's great to have her here and she'll take us through this initial presentation and then we can discuss anything you'd like to discuss from there.
Sure.
Take it away, Lauren.
Good.
Welcome.
And I encourage, I've met with so many of you so many times in the past, but it's been a while since I've been in person. I encourage you, as always, to ask questions as we go through because often it's a little bit easier to cover the current topic, but we also will probably come back and talk about it as a group, but certainly feel free to interrupt. I welcome the interruptions. I did want to do, on page two of this presentation, want to give you a quick introduction or maybe a history overview of kind of things that we have done and developed with the city and the administration over the last few years. It's hard to believe that it's actually started in the spring of '09, so we are nearing, you know, almost a three-year mark. So, some of this becomes, you know, hmm, what did we do again? So, I wanted to walk through it. The first step as we came on board, working with Russ and Eric, was to develop a reserve policy or what we would coin as kind of your savings account as the city and what the right level was to determine that we will not, it's a minimum balance, if you will. We determined that to be, at the time, adopted at 33%. We did that analysis and that recommendation. Oh, that's right. I'm gonna, y'all might have to remind me to click. We determined that level to be at 33%. That was the level that we established and adopted back in the spring of '09. That was kind of the first step of this process. The second step was associated with, okay, now that we kind of determined what we'll leave in our savings account or our reserve levels, how do we approach and how do we look at funding debt going forward? And we developed a debt policy. Within that, we talked about a lot about just the mechanics of issuing debt and things that is very important for the city, but more importantly, I think, we talked about and we established these benchmarks or where we wanted to put ourselves kind of as a threshold of don't go above or below a certain level. And we refer to those kind of within here as, they're different ratios or globally as the affordability ratios. So, keeping those in mind as well as this 33% reserve level, then we said, okay, you know, what's the next steps? And I want to talk about that in just a second, but I want to talk about on page three, the actual ratios you'll see that we'll spend some time on today. These are ratios that we found to be included in the rating agencies' review of the city's credit, not just the city of Franklin, but when they review all city credits. The first one is debt services a percent of operating expenditures and this measures, obviously, how much of your expenditures is tied up in actual debt obligations. The current policy level is at about 8%. Net debt per capita measures the net debt to your population base. Your current policy level is to be at or below 2,000 per person. Per capita debt, per capita income, measures each person's ability to pay back their portion of the debt. The current policy is at 3%. The net debt, net direct debt.
Can you slow down just a tad?
Oh, sure. I'm so sorry.
I'm reading, trying to absorb this, but we're going on to the next one and I'm just...
Sure, let's back it...
Okay, so, you're saying the debt service as a percentage of the operating expenses, okay.
Mm-hmm.
But, okay, I thought was different than 8%. Go ahead.
Okay. Any questions about the net debt per capita, the amount of debt on each individual person in the population?
Well, when you say net debt to population, explain that a little bit more.
You have general obligation debt, so that's your unlimited taxing authority debt, meaning that you pledge the full faith and credit of the city. So, when we refer to net debt, we refer to that as the true debt that is on the, based on tax base, so you're taxing authority, so property taxes. So, net debt per capita is each, if you take your population, whether it be the census population in 2000, or they also provide interim data, or the census data from 2010, and your amount of GO, pure GO self-debt that you need, you have outstanding at that time, each person's share of the debt within your population, so within the city limits of Franklin, based on that population number.
So, we back out the utility debt?
Right.
The water and sewer debt is taken out of that?
That's supported...
But we also back out what's paid by road impact fees and facilities taxes and hotel motel.
Yeah, those that are non-general fund...
Right, that is not...
Okay, so we back out the utility debt. What else? The road impact?
The debt that's supported by road impact fees, hotel motel tax. So, it really becomes...
Facilities tax.
Facilities, yeah.
So, if this were the population of the city?
Correct.
Then each one of us would be responsible for $2,000.
Right, that's your policy level, meaning we want it to be something, 2,000 or below.
Okay.
And...
But we want to say one thing, the utility debt, the water and sewer must be paid by their customers.
Right.
However, if there is a down in the road impact fee or the facilities tax or something like that, then the city is obligated for that, whereas the city is not obligated for water and sewer.
You actually are obligated for water and sewer?
Well, but...
But you have the ability to raise rates and charges to cover it, is what, I see what you're saying.
But you cannot pay into that. You cannot, the city cannot give money to water and sewer. And what do you mean, you can't pay into it out of the general? The city cannot pay into water and sewer.
You could pay, to pay your debt.
You can subsidize the water and sewer. It's rarely done. It's usually done through loans. It cannot be done the other way. You can't use...
You subsidize the general fund, correct.
You can't subsidize...
Oh, but you can the other way.
Tax-supported debt.
But I don't think...
See, this is why we need to slow down. Go through this. So, sorry.
It's frowned upon.
It is definitely frowned upon because they expect those to support themselves, but they're not expecting facilities tax and road impact fees to support themselves.
Right.
That's correct.
You would be, would not want to get into that situation because they are designed to be self-supporting utilities and your customer base within those utilities don't necessarily match up with your city population exactly either. So, it's a different set of folks. There's a lot of overlap, but they're not one in the same.
Right. Those are all very, very good questions. I'm glad we've kind of backed up.
I need time to process...
And they will build on each other, so I'm glad that you've stopped us because I think that if we had a discussion on the net debt per capita, then that allows us to hopefully move on to the net debt per capita, the per capita debt as a per capita income. So, per capita income is produced through the Bureau of Economic Analysis.
Analysis.
And it says, in general, what is each person within this population, within the city of Franklin, what is their income level? So, how can they support their portion of the debt, which we've determined in the ratio above?
Which would be the $2,000.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right.
So, their ability to support that, their portion of the debt.
Our ability, let's keep it around this table.
That works. That makes sense.
You know, that's...
Between the public.
That's right.
So, we, what is the 3%?
That's the policy level that we have established, that we want that to be below 3%. Your ability to support, each person at this table's ability to support their own portion of the debt.
Well, what is the $2,000 above it?
That's a separate, that's, okay, so if we look, that's one criteria. So, these are each individual criterias that we have established to kind of measure, if you will, the affordability of future debt issuance.
So, they aren't necessarily the same?
No, ma'am, they're not. So, when we look at the existing debt that the city has and if you were to look at layering on new debt, we want to be at a level where each person at this table, your debt per person is 2,000 or below. Net debt is 2,000 or below.
And that differs from the next one, which is based on income.
Your ability to support and pay back.
Income of the populace.
Right, your ability to pay back your portion of the debt.
So, if you had a community that had less income than our community has, then that percentage would be a heck of a lot lower.
Right.
But because we have higher income levels...
Higher.
Higher.
Because we have higher income levels, then it reduces that percentage.
So, right. If you look at the income levels that have been determined for the people at this table, if you have a higher income per capita, then you can support more debt, but we've put like a limit, if you will, on the city at the 3% level.
Yep.
The next criteria that we have established for us to always consider when looking at existing debt and future debt is net direct debt as a percent of market value. So, then this takes into consideration, same concept from earlier, the direct GO paid from property tax base debt that's outstanding of the city and any future debt, looking at the market value, which is the actual value, not the appraised value. That's correct.
Value of what?
Homes.
Your property within your community.
Property.
Office building.
Property within the city limit.
Did you say real value versus...
Real value versus not assessed.
Not assessed.
Not assessed.
Real value, not assessed debt.
Right, and they refer to, they, being the rating agencies, refer to as market value. I wish we could not...
Because the assessed value is a smaller portion of national value.
Correct.
We're not tax-free.
So, this is on real value.
Real.
So, market value is real?
Yes.
Okay. Not assessed.
Not assessed.
It's not pretend.
Suspect is 25%.
Yeah, it's a 4%. Yes.
Right.
So, that's it. Your 0.8.
0.8%, mm-hmm.
That's our policy.
And these levels were, and just to kind of back up to where we talked about the debt policy, these levels were established when we started out the debt policy process by looking at where the city was at that point in time, as well as what we coined to be the comparable cities within not just the state, because there are just a handful that we would consider even comparables within the state, but we stepped outside the state and looked regionally at other comparable cities, whether it be based on their population growth, their existing population, their sales tax, how reliant they are on those, those types of criterias, how we kind of set this level. But at the end of the day, this was the level we determined to be the right level for us to watch and monitor as we look at existing debt and future debt to consider when looking at capital projects.
A key component here is, again, AAA rating is a critical concern to us to maintain that, but we also looked, we looked at the AAA general numbers, but we also honed that into other AAA cities that have gone through or are going through significant growth demands. That was another element that we looked at and sort of built a peer city group within AAA's that had been through a lot of growth, so that that was a good comparison for us as well, because a built-out city that's a AAA is probably not as good a comparison as a city that's dealing with some of the challenges and demands that we are. So, we kind of looked at all those different varieties and where those groups of cities were in formulating these numbers as benchmarks. And again, we try to look at these collectively, you know, all of these different measures are the types of measures that the rating agencies look at to see, put your debt and your obligations in context, within your community, within your local economy, within the city operations.
That's good. I said I was taking for granted the fact that I think about y'all are AAA and that everyone in this room understands that what it means to be a AAA and how we got to this point, but that's a very good intro as to how we got to this point.
Down at the bottom of this, you reiterate about the general fund balance as a percent of revenues is 33%. My comment has been, and to people earlier, and I need to say it today, back whenever we put this 33% in, the general fund got revenues from all of the property tax. Now, some of the property tax revenue, you know, based on our budget, is diverted to debt service and so I have a concern that now we're talking about 33% of a smaller number, not because our budget has gone down because of the economy, but it is technically a percent of a, it is 33% of a smaller number because we are diverting our property taxes into the debt service, no longer going into the general fund. So, I just want to say that that may not be what we talk about today, but the thing is, in my opinion, 33% of what we were talking about three years ago is not 33% of what we're looking at now because we've kicked, what, $5 million out into the debt service?
When did that take place?
Well, you know, whenever we do that debt service...
2009, yeah, 10.
You're 2010.
I said, we need to know that. We need to, our, we need to discuss that.
Well, while we're talking about it, the purpose, again, I just want to make sure we understand the purpose of the 33% minimum fund balance that we're talking about. We're not saying this is, the total fund balance, this is just the benchmark we have for the minimum. The purpose in having that minimum fund balance is to support our budget. If for some reason we go for one month or two months or three months without any revenue at all, at 33%, we've basically said, we've got enough powder dry, where if we don't take in a dime for four months out of a 12-month year, we'll still have enough money to scrape by. We could just barely scrape by, but that's the point in doing it. So, the 33%, whether the property tax is going over or what number you calculated on, it's the amount of your budget and your expenditures that you need to be focused on. Do you want three months' worth of powder dry or do you want five months or is four months about right?
What do we have now?
We have about 46, 47% or 49%, depending on the way that you calculate it. If we use, you know, if we use the ad's premise that, you know, if we put back the money that's now going to the debt service, we'd be at about 46...
49%.
49.
46%.
That's right, 46, and if you go back, just general fund alone, 49.
It'd be 49.
But also, we have to remember that that reserve that we have is now around $24 million when three years ago it was $30 million. So, we have been having to use it. We've been, we've been needing to use some of it, although, you know, again, we have been so much more fortunate than most places here.
And I guess maybe this is the time where I mentioned that you may think that we're crazy because we have four or five different measures that we're looking at in terms of aggregate affordability. You know, each one of this is looking, each one of these measures looks at our number from a slightly different perspective. You know, if you were applying for a home loan, you know, the banks wouldn't want to make sure that your debt service or your mortgage payment is within a certain percentage of your budget. But you may have a lot of assets where your debt service monthly is a very small portion of your total assets or your real assessed value or assessed value. So, that, every one of these numbers is really looking at our numbers from a slightly different angle and you put them all together and you come up with an aggregate of where we stand.
Well, it's a safeguard.
It is a safeguard. And that's what, that's the way the rating agencies are looking at it and that's why we went down this path.
It's smart.
Is to be able to look at it from all those different angles.
Because that's exactly what your rating agencies are doing. They don't focus on one, they focus on the stability and the wealth and health of the entire city as it relates. So, these are just some of them. They have a list of certain things.
Well, it's no different than when you go to get a mortgage.
Exactly.
And you look at your income, they look at other debt that you hold, they look at, that's why people say, you're divorced, what's your childcare payments? You know, they look at all this and then they look at your assets and how much do you have in reserves? What are your savings? What is your, you know, so you're saying that they're looking at all those things across the board.
That's correct.
They're all important.
Yeah, they are. And I will, Anne, I'm glad you brought this up. This is a very good point. As part of this discussion that we're about to have that focuses on these ratios that we've established is that we felt it was important in working with the administration to establish that savings level or the reserve policy level first, because when you start talking about projects, you've got a pot of money, you could certainly use that first, but you have to establish what's your comfort level of what you hold in savings for that doomsday scenario. It's the same idea as how you think about your own personal finances. So, we felt like that was an important first step before we got into looking at the level of, you know, benchmarking for looking at future debt. And that's where I want to kind of start talking about what we call the capacity, capacity model, capacity phase, whatever you want to call it, is that we started this on the tail end of working on the reserve policy than the debt policy, saying, okay, now we've kind of established our parameters for how much we want to leave in a savings account and how much we've kind of coined as the affordability level for new debt or to use pay-as-you-go. So, in August of '09, that's when we started working with the administration to develop a capacity model. It takes into consideration the historical revenues and expenditures, thank you, of the city from, no, thank you, from FY 2004 through and including 2011, as you are nearing the end of finalizing everything with your 11 audit, as well as the 2012 budgeted revenues and expenditures. So, we continue to update it as we go on, because when we first started this, obviously, we only included actual information through '09. We have an area where we look at historical growth rates and kind of how we want to project growth rates as it's tied to revenues and expenditures. We have, within the model, we look at the outstanding general obligation debt as well as the outstanding water and sewer debt. And obviously, as kind of we have a tickler, we'll always monitor your reserve levels and that's part of this discussion, that we will not fall, as part of this discussion, never fall below that 33% level that is the current minimum reserve level. And then we also folded in the affordability ratios that we talked about on the previous page and track them also, not only where the city is projected to go, but where Moody's, which is probably the most, I guess, well-known rating agency, and they are good about at least annually, they put out a report that provides medians for their local government group. So, it's not always exactly the same time every year, but they are the only agency that produces that report on an annualized basis. So, it gives us an opportunity to track where are we projected to go versus our policy and versus where other AAA's or double A's for that matter, to kind of see the other ends of the spectrum or have been in the past to kind of say, okay, we want to stay within this level, it's a comfort zone for us.
Before we leave that page, what was your growth rate assumption for revenue and expenditure? It says here, growth rate assumptions relative to expenditure line items.
Uh-huh. For each individual line item within your audit, there's a different growth rate assumption tied to it and we work with the administration to develop it, you know, looking at historically where your revenues and expenditures are tracked versus where they're projected to go in the future.
Those are back in the budget that we passed, would list what our assumptions were.
And we build off of the existing budget and then we've put multiple years of assumptions going forward.
Right.
Well, I know at one point there was something like 2%, you know, that was written on this, but I didn't see that in here.
Right, it defaults to, we look at it on an individual line item basis. However, for some of the, I'm trying to think of a smaller one where there's, it's a smaller revenue line item where fines and fees and...
Charges for services.
Charges for services, where if we have not projected an actual growth rate that we feel comfortable with, it defaults to 2%. However, but we have worked with the administration to kind of scrub where those numbers have been. Obviously, it's been a more volatile timeframe, I would say, over the last three to four years. So, I think if anything, these growth rates have been tested and stressed to the max to where if you would have looked at this five years ago, we probably would have put some assumptions in there that were not realistic and probably a little bit humorous at this point, but...
Some of us still have some of those.
You're right, this is great, we can keep this going. So, I will say that the staff has been very, very aggressive in kind of coming back and saying, okay, what's realistic in terms of line item growth rates, if any, on revenues and expenditures, because, you know, they've obviously had to, in the last few years, cut back expenditures drastically to tie to the revenues.
And we can give you all a chart of those assumptions and show you how that plays out over multiple years, just to give you a sense of what we have assumed at this point.
Those are also, that's a very good point, they come back and they are modified and reviewed every year. We certainly can't rely on last year's assumptions to carry us forward for the next few years. It's certainly just a kind of a track of where we think we could be in the next few years, but we recognize it's important to go back and reevaluate this every year.
Who does that?
Russ.
We all do.
Russ, yeah. They, we fix them.
And Mike and a lot of us look at it. Steve Sims also tells their focus.
Depending on the revenue source, I mean, we get information from all the departments on things like building permits.
That's right.
But some of the assumptions are probably, if you see the numbers, you'll think they're a little more aggressive than Lauren just described in the case of building permits just because we went down so far that, you know...
Down 70%.
Using a 2% escalator, probably dramatically understate, so we used a little bit higher figure for some of the things like charges for services and so on, but court fines, you know, did not budge a lot. Typically, our big revenue sources, property tax and sales tax, we've effectively used inflation at 2% plus some kind of a factor for growth.
And we hear that, Russ, during our budget hearings, I mean, this is when you are...
We do it for a year and, I mean, we give you a forecast for several years.
Right, because I remember hearing that.
But we've updated that even since the last budget was passed in June last year.
And this goes further out. We look about 10, we go 10 years out and obviously the farther out you go.
It becomes a total, I mean, you know...
But it gives us something.
Assumptions. But at some point, you have to say, okay, forward-looking, let's, you have to have a basis and somewhere to look and take this into consideration. It doesn't make sense just to look at next year anymore. You can't do that, you know?
Especially in this exercise, because we're issuing debt that's 15 years. So, we have to have some kind of a sense of where that is going.
Right.
Yeah, we've got to remember that whenever we spend money on this and these projects, we're going to be paying for it at least 20 years.
That's right.
We're still going to be, we're going to be responsible for the debt for 20 years.
And we, I talked a little bit about this on page five, but just to reiterate that this is, it's a, it's an ever-evolving process, meaning that we continue to update it with actual revenues, expenditure, we work with Russ and his team to take those into consideration as soon as y'all finalize a budget. Russ provides it to us. It's built in because that, starting from that current budget is the best place for us to start, so we don't look at stale data. Like I said earlier, the growth rate assumptions are scrubbed and looked at over the year. In fact, at times we've gone back and forth and changed them to be more accurate as to what we're seeing reflective in the numbers. Any changes to your existing debt is also captured within this model and I put this line on here in the $19 million series bank loan debt service for water and sewer. You have a water, you have an existing portfolio of water and sewer debt, of which there was a portion that was in a variable rate mode, so meaning the rate was subject to volatility in the market. Although that was a very attractive interest rate, it was still subject to volatility. We took it, I think you all recall, we looked at other options to kind of make this a very stabilized, we know exactly where the debt's going to be. So, any type of change like that is reflected in the model, meaning now that 100% fixed rate water sewer debt portfolio is captured in here. So, it's also a good place for us to house all your existing debt, to say, okay, how much is, how much water sewer debt do you have outstanding and is it fixed or variable rate? At this point, it's all 100% fixed rates. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Moody's does produce a local government report annually. We usually expect it ends the spring of the current year, but it's reflective of the previous year. They actually didn't produce it till September of this year, but it nonetheless is reflective of data that they put together for, well, it was supposed to be of 2010, they did make note that it's also relied on a lot of 2009 data. So, significant lag, but as soon as we get that information, it is worked into the report, So significant lag, but as soon as we get that information, it is worked into the report, into the capacity model, which just generates this report.
Say that one more time, they use-
I'm sorry.
They use basically prior year, but they still use 2009.
Yes, so what we got in the report, as Russ and I went through it, for the report that was produced in September of '11, which was the 2010 local government medians, they made note that this relies heavily on 2009 data, so-
But they really hadn't sent one out at the time they normally did.
No, they're-
So this was really lagging.
It had been a year and a half.
It had been a year and a half, right.
It was a significant lag on their part in terms of, you know, I certainly can't explain why, but they are slowly coming out with reports, let's just say.
But it is different from the last one we had.
It is.
Definitely.
It is. You're absolutely correct. So on page six, this is just a screenshot for you to kind of understand of how this works, is that you see in this, we have just a screenshot of the revenues in this model, that you have actual and then budgeted, and then we start layering in what we would turn, coin like forecasted. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not-
You said remind you.
Very much. Not that anyone can see those little ones.
Not that we could see it.
Yeah.
But that's what we do have on all of it.
So, so I just want this to really reiterate how this works. It is a line-by-line item approach, and that it, and if, what you can't see back here is that there is the historical data as well, obviously not as beneficial unless you start looking at historically where you've been, but really is, helps us kind of say, okay, where are we at right now, and where do we anticipate going? I would say more or less in the immediate future, but not just one year looking out, more five, you know, years looking out. And then, any questions on that?
Yeah, you know, that was one place where I noticed on the real personal property taxes, this was, you know, what we, what we budgeted was up 5% from what we got in 2011, then it goes down to 3% more, and then, you know, maybe for those others. But Russ was telling me, we thought whenever we, whenever that we had the reappraisal, that might make a difference there. But my concern is that if we're diverting money out of, out of the property tax over into debt service, as our debt service gets more, gets to be more, because we've got, we know we've got to borrow more for projects that we've already committed for, that this is going to be less instead of more. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not exactly a minor thing, but it's, it is, but it is, but it may be that we'll actually have less money in here.
Good point.
Laurie?
Yes.
An interest and penalty, 2011, 59.5, and then it goes down, and then starts back up to 50,376. Why is, why does that do that?
Why does it go down in the budget and your-
And then go back up?
If I may.
Yeah.
This is, this is penalty and interest on property tax only. So we assume that coming out of 2008, '09, where there were some delinquencies for a lot of reasons, foreclosures, et cetera, that we needed to lower the budget for this particular year to get it back down to where it had been historically. We were treating 2011 as a little bit of a bump.
Higher than normal, so we went more to a normal level.
So we're now back to normal, but with very modest growth.
Okay. Thank you.
We might just mention that we have very little in the way of delinquency on property tax that invokes penalty and interest.
And we've talked a little bit about the information on page seven, but just talking a little bit more about the functionality of the model and what it's really developed to help us do and complete for you all, is obviously to look at the modification to growth rate assumptions, whether it be annually or in between the process of providing this information to you and coming to you the next time. We can work with Russ and his team to modify those as needed. Look at, it also takes into consideration not just your outstanding debt, but how that debt rolls off, meaning as it matures over time, then, takes into consideration, okay, you have a downward sloping debt service, then you have, as we layer on debt, we want to take into consideration existing maturing debt and new debt service. We can look at issuing debt either in a short-term or a long-term mode. For most of these projects, we typically look at more of a long-term in nature, but we have that flexibility. We also have the flexibility to look at if you wanted to finance the debt or any type of capital finance projects, excuse me, you could do it as a pay-as-you-go mechanism as opposed to debt. And then obviously, that speaks to other additional income sources, whether it be impact fees, hotel motel, user charges, so forth, and looking at those types of funding levels for specific projects.
It might be good to say, you know, what can they be used for, since you're talking about the impact fees, hotel taxes, what are the restrictions on those, just to kind of give us an overview?
On the, on the impact fees, there are really, I guess, three if you count the water and sewer. I mean, there are the tap fees that we have from water and sewer, but road impact fees have to be spent on arterial roads, as we, as we understand that.
For new capacity.
What's that now, what'd you say?
Road impact fees.
New capacity, though.
Arterial roads, saying it's new capacity, you cannot use, you cannot use it for maintenance.
And that can be changed, but we've elected the last couple of times not to change that to include smaller roads, and the facilities tax-
Because at one point, we did. At one point, they changed from arterials down to-
Well, when we first initiated road impact fee, we had collectors included, and then we changed it out, so. And this last time, we looked at adding collector roads back in to being able to be used, used in the calculation for what the fee would be, but you decided you did not want to include collectors, you being the board, so it's still arterials only.
Okay.
Why did we decide that?
The fee, to be able to do it, I, I, I mean, you decide, I think the main reason was to include collectors, the fee itself was going to be exponentially higher, because collector, there are a lot more collectors, and it's just the cost that's included, so.
But road impact fees essentially has to be spent on roads. Facility tax has to be spent on either police, fire, solid waste, or parks, and it's restricted to that.
And it also can only be spent for growth, is that right? What'd you say?
Yes, it can only be spent on increased capacity, if you will. Facilities tax helped pay for part of the new police headquarters, but, but we were limited in how much we could apply to that, because it could only be the expanded amount of square footage above and beyond what we already had.
And now hotel motel is a little more open, but as a policy, I think the city and the board has generally looked at that for investments that relate to tourism, visitors, that's what you did, Harlinsdale, Park at Harlinsdale Farm, and the Eastern Flank, and the Conference Center, obviously. So those are things that have, that's what you've chosen to, we might have a little more flexibility on that, but that's been the focus to this point, and that's the way we've continued to look at it as we look at capital projects.
So a facility tax could possibly be parks, and hotel tax could also be parks.
Those could both contribute to the same type of project.
And both of those could come out as separate.
Okay. And you're saying the road impact fees for new roads, not repairs of arterials, not repairs, but, but, but they also, you said for increased capacity.
Yes.
Since we would be adding on a new lane or something. And then, the other question I had was, okay, then we also are going to get rid of this expense from the Conference Center coming up soon. So is that in here somewhere where we will be having more capacity in our-
It, it's a factor in that, in the, in the model, it shows that after 2013, that debt drops, drops off.
Right, goes, goes off the books.
That's right.
So-
And the other, the other factors you're doing all these, is you are retiring debt every year from existing obligations all around. So it's all a mix of what you might bring on, what's going to drop off over time, and tries to blend all that together to show you how it affects your-
And it also includes any reworking of debt for new rates or lower rates or fixed rates.
The other things you've done over the years.
Everything you've done, yes.
But let's also say, the big debt is all, what, 2021 down to 2037, the big debt. The small debts are the one, that we, we have a small amount outstanding on the ones that are going, being paid off.
Like amortizing.
Being paid off, let's say.
I see what you're saying.
They're being dropping off.
There, there is a little bump in those years, but I think in principle, the way you need to think about it is, if you do nothing, the debt goes down every year.
Yeah.
Unless you do something really to replace it. And even though you have larger amounts due out in those years, we're paying off some of that.
True, we're paying off some volume there.
We're paying off some of all of it, every year.
Except, except that thing that doesn't kick in until when? Isn't there one that doesn't kick in?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we actually have two that, that doesn't kick in. If you remember when we did the recovery zone bonds, you know, the, the final maturity determines how long we will get the rebate from the federal government for that. So we wanted to leave as much of that outstanding as long as we possibly could. And that's where Lauren was talking about, we can choose to go short-term, long-term, you know, depending on what the, what the curve looks like as far as our debt service, we'll use shorter-term debt that's less expensive to fill in those, those low spots over the years on any future debt that we do, to make it as level as we possibly can.
So when you say short-term, what, what type of years are you talking about, short-term?
Well, I think anything less than 15 years is considered short-term, but-
Really?
You know, I looked at one of the Bloomberg things, I guess it was yesterday, and treasuries, if you go under, under 10 years, if you go down to eight or nine years, the treasury rate's 170. So if we pay 15 or 18 basis points above that, you're talking about, you know, if we could, if we could hold borrowing under 10 years, we could borrow for less than 2%.
Right. Okay.
And we look at how to structure that with the existing debt to maximize the benefit. With the recovery zones in particular, we're getting a rebate of 45 to 35%, depending on which category it was in. So that's part of why we structured that, to maximize the benefit of that rebate.
Is that just one time or yearly?
That's throughout the life of those issuances. So we structured that in a way to, so that made the, we got the greatest benefit from that in the context of what we had outstanding also in our debt portfolio.
But the availability of that has expired now.
Right.
That was-
Which we took, yeah, we took that. And it was the right branch.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
But you said, Russ, if we borrow under what, then we get 2%?
10 years?
Under 10 years right now, right now.
If we get out of market tomorrow, we would, you know, and we stayed 10 years or under, we would probably pay less than 2%.
It's a snapshot.
Yeah. In general, you have a downward sloping debt service schedule, meaning that your debt is being paid off over time, and what you're referring to is, you're also paying the interest on it as you move farther out. It's less interest, more principal, just like how we, you pay your mortgage. I'm trying to think of things that we did not cover in this discussion on page seven. We talked a little bit about any new debt, we can obviously modify the interest rate assumption. Obviously, rates are really, really attractive right now, I can't say where they'll be next year or two or three years from now, but I can give you some sense that they probably won't be lower than they are right now. So we have the ability and the functionality within this model to look at rates and the actual structure of your debt, whether it be level debt service or level principal. And talking about modifying existing debt services that relates to the overall debt service, that's really what you're talking about, like if you do a refinancing, we take that into consideration, your interest savings, that's accounted for as well in this model.
Okay, so when we get through with all this, one of the questions I have, and this is probably premature, but once we get through with all this and everything, because interest rates are as low as they are, is it, is it wise, working at our, you know, our reserve percentage and everything else, is it wise to look at the projects that are critical, like one, two, and three on our list, and saying, now's the time to borrow for those, because we could get a fixed rate, and we can lock it in, because we know in a year to two years from now, that probably will never be the case again, and we probably, for eons, will never see this again.
Right.
So will that be part of the consultation with the city, to direct us, and possibly lead us?
Not to put you on the spot.
You have the same question that I think everybody's challenged with right now. Everybody, is it, if you recognize, do you do it now? It's the same, if you think about personally, do you buy a house right now?
Good point.
Because you know-
You don't have to sell one, absolutely buy.
I mean, you know, I mean, if you buy it right now, you can lock in at a four and a quarter, and your parents are looking at you saying, are you kidding me? Yes, of course you buy a house, but then you say, but the financial responsibility of the mortgage payments are mine for the next 30 years, so it's that whole balancing.
And what's your capacity to meet that responsibility?
Responsibility, and that is the challenge that not only the city of Franklin has, but I would say everyone who has this opportunity at their hands, say, I can borrow at rates that I've never thought were possible, and lock them in with no risk, with the exception of the affordability risk. And the long-term payment is that it's not just a short-term view, it's a 20-year commitment.
Well, I also look at it this way, too, that if you, if you have these opportunities, and you, of course, you have to put everything into play.
Right.
But if I was going out to buy, say, a TV or a second room in my home versus a car that I need to get myself, a reliable car, I need to get myself to and from my work.
Right.
What is the smart deal? Absolutely doing the car.
Right.
Forget the darn TV. That's a need versus a want, you know, and I, I think those are the things we have to look at when we're saying, what do we do in the future, the near future here, to borrow our debt capacity and everything else, and to pay off in the long run with these incredibly low rates? And what are the critical factors in the city? Take a look at these roads and everything else we have.
Well, on the other hand, back to the house comment, which I really, I appreciated your saying that. It would be a temptation to buy a house that you think would, you would need in 15 or 20 years, whenever, say, if you're a young couple with your, when your children are growing up, because you could get it at such a low rate.
Right.
That wouldn't necessarily be a good idea.
Well, that's not really smart.
No, no, but that, but that, but see, that's also a part of it, that, that in 10 or 15 years, you certainly might be able to pay for it, but what would you be doing paying for it in the, in the intervening year?
And that's part of the, yeah.
I kind of like, that's the other side to it.
Very much a balance.
Exactly, that's part of the overall, you know.
That's the reason we're doing this.
We're here to have this discussion.
And I would just add to that, that one of the things that I think was really smart of the board when we did the policy, was the whole idea was to set these policies and these benchmarks outside of the context of, we got to get this project done or that project done. You did it outside of a specific group of projects that you wanted to see done, and said, well, these are the things that should govern us, and now you apply that to this reality that helps serve as that, kind of that governor on how far you go on these issues. But you're right, there are, there are great opportunities in terms of, you can get money cheaper than you ever can, and we are getting projects at a very affordable cost as well on the, on the bidding side, but we got to be able to live within our means, too. So it's hitting that balance, and that's, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
It's basically setting the budget and setting-
And what you were saying is on page eight here, which is, you know, this will help us to determine our capacity to define CIP, you mentioned that, so this is indeed where we're headed.
That's right.
Kind of dropped to, so if you could go on.
Sure. Yep, no, yeah.
Get to that.
That's right, I know, I'm going through all this buildup, and I keep talking about this, and you're like, what's the output?
It sort of seemed like it was leading into it.
It is. On page eight, I won't rehash this, because a lot of this was already talked about, it's really monitoring these ratios, determining your affordability. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not used to driving.
We have a phone.
I know.
I can dig my phone.
That's right. So keeping all of the stuff that we've talked about in mind, it now comes back to, this is supposed to help us and aid us in making decisions, or at least informing you all with, having you with the right information to help you make decisions as it relates to projects. Not so much making the decisions, but arming you with the right information. So if you, we've kind of now talked about project specifics on page nine, and this is, I believe, a report that you all have seen back from when you started talking about these projects, and when you ranked them as your top 10. This information came directly from Russ and Eric, so I hope it's familiar, and we wanted just to reiterate, and we may have to flip back to this, as we talk about the scenarios that we've talked, we've reviewed, in looking at capacity and affordability. Any questions on nine?
Well, yeah, I mean, whenever I look at what we, what we did back in the fall, maybe, maybe we need to look at some of these other things, because it also had our committed projects and said how much we're going to be spending on them also.
We've got, that's-
Where is that?
That's sort of coming up in a couple slides.
That's coming, so this is new, not committed projects, correct?
This is new, although a couple of them have really become committed. Priority one, the Eastern Flank, has essentially become committed with the commitment to the grant, and we don't anticipate additional dollars beyond what the board earmarked, gosh, a year plus ago. And then, with the purchase of the, the new public works facility, former 84 lumber site, we've really moved that project into a committed project as well, just because of that unique opportunity and timing.
But I don't, what I don't see is how much on our committed projects we still must borrow that we have not borrowed at this point.
You're going to see that in two slides.
Well, I thought I.
Page 11.
I thought I looked at that, but.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So let's put.
Let's get there, guys.
And if you look at 10 and 11, maybe this will be helpful, to kind of look at 10 and 11 together. So what we were charged with is looking at these top 10 projects, as well as what has been committed to be borrowed or to be financed or paid for at some point in the future.
Okay, and the question I have is that we have already borrowed the money to pay for Hillsborough Road from, would you say, Del Rio back down to 96? We've already borrowed that money, is that right?
We've borrowed 9 million towards that project. We don't know if that project's going to be a little, that portion of Hillsborough's going to be over-under, but we've essentially borrowed nine of the 20 million that we think will be needed.
But generally, that southern portion is the appropriate one to earmark because it ties to the recovery, the recovery zone funding that we got, and that's in the recovery zone. The northern portion is not.
And if you'll note on 11, the committed project number one, Hillsborough, we're showing 11 million more in commitment.
Yeah.
In addition to what's borrowed.
So that would make, well, now, let me ask you this. Does the 9 million also include, what was it, Third Avenue?
No, that was, that's in addition to the nine.
Oh, so right, so really, we committed to that also, right?
We have, but it's already borrowed.
You've borrowed it.
No, that's what, okay. So the 9 million for the Del Rio to 96, plus the, how much for?
11.
You've got 11 million in this.
You're talking about Third Avenue.
No, I'm talking about Third Avenue North.
Around five million?
Around five.
So we've already borrowed that, too? We have that?
Yes.
We don't anticipate additional borrowing for that project.
That's what I didn't see and wanted to.
For which project?
Third Avenue North Extension, which was in your previous funding plan. So we've completed a number of those projects, Columbia Avenue, the Royal Oaks Intersection, we're nearing Carruthers, we're nearing completion on McEwen Phase 3. So those are all things that have already come through the previously funded, or identified funding plan. These are the components that are left that still require some additional borrowing, and that's what Lauren's highlighted in that top section. Those are seen as givens.
And they are included, and I kind of hate to jump, but if you go back to 10, where we talk.
These all kind of go together, don't they?
It does all kind of go together. Right, it's hard to kind of balance and get it all on one page. But we were charged with looking at multiple scenarios, multiple funding scenarios for this meeting, and that's kind of where I've summarized those on page 10. Base cases, the committed projects only, and Alderman Pearson, that's what you're referring to, is the remaining portion of Hillsborough Road, and now we've called the Consolidated Public Works Facility, or the old 84 Lumber. And that's, but that's, you'll see the actual dollars occur on page 11, but those are carried forward with each funding scenario, because we understand that's a given, it's committed. The other scenarios that we've looked at outside of the base case, so they kind of layer on, on top of one another, is, or, I take that back, everyone always takes into consideration that the committed projects are included. Scenario one, are the top five projects without phasing? Stop me if you have questions.
Plus committed.
Plus committed. So you could always say plus committed.
Wait, wait, wait.
We're just describing the scenarios.
I'm talking about page 10.
Okay, so committed projects only, and that.
So that's your base, is committed only?
That only includes projects one and two on page 11?
Committed projects.
Is that right?
It includes the top two on page 11.
It said the top two on page 11.
Yeah, the ones that, yeah.
So committed would be just the top two on page 11, plus the other things that we've already borrowed for.
Yes.
So you're talking about Hillsborough and the.
And the Public Works Facility.
Okay.
Right, and scenario one is the top five projects without phasing.
That's the top five from your list.
This list on the previous page. Scenario two has top five projects with phasing on McEwen and Carruthers Lab Park. Scenario three is the top three projects without phasing, plus McEwen Design.
And that's the McEwen that goes.
East of Wilson.
Yeah, East of Wilson Pike to the city limits. That's the one that ties into the agreement with Brentwood.
Yeah, which is a non-issue.
Well, what we're saying is, do the design for it. Be ready.
But it might be an issue with some others.
Yeah.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, what we're saying is, let's at least do the design, and then you're ready to do the construction when that threshold is met.
Depends how expensive the design is. And it depends, yeah, it makes sense if we're going to do Phase 4 design, to do all the design all the way through, it does. But I want to know how much more of expense the, from Wilson Pike over to the, you know, city limits, that would cost for the design. So we need to take that into consideration.
That's factored in. I think it's around 245,000, something like that.
It's 240 on page 11.
240.
Oh, well, oh, is it on there?
It's on four on page 11.
Oh, okay. All right, so that, so that would probably be a smart thing to do, then. 240,000 gets designed, because that part is going to be developer-driven. That is not going to get developed, but to have the design ready to go when that does happen would be probably.
The downside to that is that sometimes, whenever it's designed, then it has to be designed again.
Depending on how long it sits.
Yeah, how long it sits. Like when we were saying the Eastern Flank Road, you know, we're having to pay again.
Well, the other thing with the Design 4, McEwen Phase 4, we need to design all that for four lanes, we need to get the right-of-way for four lanes, we need, we were talking about this before, and build the two lanes. So it might make sense to go ahead and design four lanes all the way through, and that kind of stuff. So those scenarios, I guess, need to plan with that.
And the ideas here, you kind of scale back on the scenarios. Scenario four is the top three projects with phasing on McEwen Carruthers Lab Park, and then scenario five is staff recommendation. And we've included a slide to kind of recap what that recommendation is, or what it includes, and that's on page 11.
Yep.
So obviously, committed projects are included at the top, they're always included, but this is just, just to be clear, scenario five. Any questions on scenario five?
Staff recommendations. Scenario five is all of 11.
Yeah. We just wanted to summarize.
It's staff people. Did the whole thing, okay.
Because it was hard to describe it within the priority numbers, because it was sort of a blend of different projects.
A blend of different projects.
And the intersection, okay, number five on page 11, that's the intersection. They were getting money from the school, right, system?
Yes.
So what's the 450? Is that ours? Our component only?
But don't we have?
It's the additional portion that we have come back to you because of trying to build to a particular section at the intersection versus the original funding amount for that intersection was 1 million from the county school board and 1 million from the city. So it was a half and half. But then when we started looking at getting the design done for the intersection and the throwaway cost, if we didn't do certain things, we'd started looking at an additional cost, and that came up to be $240,000 to do something that keeps us from throwing away a bunch of improvements once we have to come back in a few years.
And do Phase 4.
And redo it.
Right.
Well, not do Phase 4, but.
We're really doing Phase 4, portion of Phase 4 early.
At that intersection.
To tie into the improvements, yeah, that we agreed to with the school.
Which we, yeah.
Right.
So we don't have to.
And our million comes from that facilities tax, school facilities tax that were collected by the county.
For this.
For the city, for this kind of.
So this is 240,000 beyond what that first 2 million was.
450, actually.
240 beyond the million?
450, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, I looked the wrong.
No, 450, that's our part, and then the facility.
You have the county's, you have the county's money of a million.
Million, right.
Then we have the facilities tax, city's facilities tax of a million.
Of a million.
And then we have the 450, I'm sorry.
So 2,000, 250.
So that's the whole, that's the whole thing. And to answer your question, Mr. Barnhill, is that we are committed to have, we are committed to have the funds committed by October of.
26th.
26th of 2012.
That's a funding committee?
That's the county's, that's the county's portion.
Is any condemnation included in that? Do we have to do any of that stuff?
We may. We've got to get some right-of-way.
There's some right-of-way we have to obtain, and it may require some condemnation.
Your biggest challenge is that there's CSX Railroad involved there, and that's what we're primarily focused in on, that's going to potentially eat up time.
And they can come back at any time in the future and go back, take us back to court and want more and more money.
For a condemnation?
Federal money.
No, it's done.
Yes, but to answer your question simply, yes. And we go to condemnation, we put into the court what we have in appraised value of the property, then if they don't agree with that, then, when we do that, then we will get the order of possession. So we can do all the work.
The project advances.
The project goes forward, but the property owner does not have to accept that, and we can be in court for years.
It's their right to challenge the value that was given for their property.
But we can still move on.
But you can do it in a way that doesn't delay the project.
Yeah.
I think we're getting diverted just a touch from what we need to be. I know there's a lot of talk about the projects, which we've been over and we've picked, but I think it might be important to move on and look at some more of the meat of the thing before we get wrapped up in some details on the intersection of Wilson Pike.
But I want to know which one this is. This is number five?
This is scenario five, staff recommendation, page 11.
But that would mean, I thought it said top five then.
It's two different scenarios. One scenario is the top five, and then scenario five is the staff recommendation that we put together, that was sort of a mix of different projects, and advancing a number of projects to the next step. Maybe didn't include construction, but finished design got us to where we could look at phasing a little better, that sort of thing.
So with those scenarios in mind, six scenarios.
Well, it may be a little too detailed, but the fire station is seven and eight. I mean, I know it's on our list and it's number two. What, I mean, time-wise?
It's designed because we're going to a standardized fire station, so we would be designing the two stations, and, but you'd only be looking at building one or the other or at whatever time you did the construction.
The scenarios that include that, which I think is scenario one, which is in the top five.
Yes.
That includes construction of one fire station. It also includes, in the modeling behind it, the operating of that fire station from when it's constructed. So that one does have the full construction. The staff recommendation was really to just take the next step and get design done for our next two fire stations. Does not commit to that funding. We were sort of taking the approach of, let's wait and see how facilities tax rebounds and when it rebounds to cover enough to maybe advance that project. But, so that's the difference between those two scenarios.
Okay, and could we say, if we build that police station, it could be basically fully funded by facilities tax, is that right?
Fire station is.
We believe by the time.
It was unbilled.
We believe by the time that we get the design done and we bid and do the construction, we would have enough facilities tax to pay for it.
But it can pay for all of it, as opposed to.
It's eligible, too.
It is eligible.
Yes, yes.
I've got one quick question for me on the design. You say the design of both stations. I thought we were designing, tell me, we have to design every single one every single time, because I thought we were designing them so they'd be identical, so we can just take it and plop it down on the piece of property.
We are designing where the stations will look identical. What you can't do is design for the site. So you have to look at, in this case, you're looking at two different sites, so you have to get the site, get the building located on the site. That's, the building will look the same unless there's special funds coming in to do some sort of.
Yeah, right.
But it's going to be the same layout of the building, but there's other issues that you have to deal with for each site.
Right.
That are different. You can't just take it and plop it down. You have to still do design beyond just the building. So that's what does.
Okay, all right.
Would you mind, just before you go to the, that, just say one more time what each scenario is, so that it's a little fresher in everybody's minds, since we've kind of gotten off on some different paths.
Right. And to be honest, it's almost, it'd be helpful if 10 was, and I don't want to ask somebody to rip their pages out, but as we go through this, we will be looking at each scenario as it relates to this funding affordability ratio, as we talked about earlier. The base case is committed only, so Hillsborough and the Consolidated Public Works Facility. Scenario one, and reiterate, all these scenarios include committed projects are included. Scenario one is top five without phasing. Scenario two is the top five with phasing. Scenario three is your top three projects without phasing. Scenario four is your top three projects with phasing. And scenario five is the detail included on page 11, which is a blend of projects and it's a staff recommendation. And that's how we will refer to it within the next few pages.
One thing that might be helpful, having gone through this a few times, pull out this page, that's page 10, page nine and 10, because it's got, the scenario is described, and it's got the top 10 list on the backside, and sort of add it to the side. That's what I've done, and it helps me, but however you want to do it.
We honestly do some separate pages.
Just keep, I keep flipping them, but that's.
And we tried to keep this as.
And the captions do.
The captions do include what it is, as a very, we do a shorthand, so top five. But, so hopefully that'll help. But certainly, we don't want to be any, there being a confusion on the scenarios and what they include. So kind of stepping into each one of those funding affordability ratios that we spoke of earlier, or the policy levels you've already established, the first one being your fund balance or your reserve levels at 33%, which is on page 12. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Kristin, give you the bell.
I know.
You're going to ring it?
As we go through, they're in the same order. We look at all scenarios on each affordability ratio, so every scenario has been tested within this page, and we are only looking at reserve levels. 33% is your policy level. The purple blocks, or the columns, if you will, are where you are or projected to go as you layer on new debt. So fund projects based on the scenarios we talked about. We have also included, and I know it's kind of tiny writing, your policy level at 33% is included, and that's the orange line. The AAA median, which was released by Moody's in September of 2011, is included, and that's the blue line.
And let us say, median means that half of them are above that.
And half are below.
Of half are below.
That's correct. And then we also, just for benchmarking comparison purposes, included the double-A median with the Moody's producers, as well as the single-A median, so you kind of see kind of where Moody's rates their local government.
They can see single-A in your.
Single-A didn't make the cut on slide 12. It did on some of the other ones, but it didn't on this one. It did on some of the other ones, but it didn't on this one.
Oh, well, I hope that's not a goal of ours, so we don't have it in there. Either way, I can guarantee you, it's below the levels of the others. And just to reiterate, the AA is the red line, and I know it's kind of hard to follow this, but let's walk through this just a little bit. And I don't want to look at each individual one because I think you'll kind of see that we, it's repetitive somewhat. As you layer on more projects, you obviously eat it more into your reserves by funding more debt service each year. So your base committed scenario, which is the first graphic always in the top left-hand corner, you will see it, for this particular scenario, you are above your policy level. For this page alone, to be higher up on the graphic is a positive in terms of you are above your policy level, or at least that's the general sense, is higher is better.
Some, yeah, some of these metrics you want to be.
Lower.
Above the line, some you want to be below the line. There's that little arrow that says positive. That positive pointing up means we want to be above the line.
This is, this is the only one, isn't it? Yeah. Then we want to be above.
Ten, can I repeat, we want to be above the line?
And this you want to be above the line.
The savings level.
Yeah, let's keep talking.
Okay, so if you look, you can kind of walk through this, and I'm not going to go through each one, but as you layer on more debt, you eat into reserves and like, for example, top five projects, you fall below your policy level at approximately 2016. So keeping that in mind, you kind of see that some of these scenarios, and I do a recap at the end, so we'll kind of, that's where the meat of this will be helpful, one pager. Moving on to page 13, because we will summarize all this on the last page. 13 is the ratio that we look at, debt service as a percent of expenditures. Same layout here, with the exception if positive is lower, so the purple bars or the columns, the lower is better. So as you layer on more debt, you can see your debt service as a percent of expenditures increases over time. You scale back your project funding, the debt service as a percent of expenditures looks more attractive in comparison to your policy. I will state, in each case, you're above your policy level.
Which is not good, I mean, which is the bad way to be.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, but I'm glad you reminded. So for each scenario, this ratio is out of whack in terms of it's above your policy level in all scenarios. However, we've said this before, as you pull back on your expenditures, as your budget has contracted and your debt service has not, because it's not something you can contract and pull back, that ratio continues to look worse. So as you cut back on expenditures.
Well, we're hoping we're not cutting back on expenditures from here on. I mean, we were cutting back on expenditures for the last three years.
From '09, when we established this.
But see, this starts with 11.
We did have a much higher budget then. The other thing that I feel obligated to remind you is, when we started out with the projects two and a half, three years ago, our anticipation was we would borrow the money somewhat smoothly over the life of the projects. We didn't do that because we had the opportunity to take advantage of Build America bonds and particularly the recovery zone bonds. And then we've refunded some variable, low rated variable rate into fixed rate debt. It has pushed us above the line somewhat arbitrarily because we elected to do that. We chose to do that because of the advantage that it gave us over the life of it. So we knew that we were going to bump up above what our policy was when we were doing that, but we thought it was worth it.
Yeah, because in the long run, that was.
Very attractive. The next measure that we looked at is on page 14, and that's the net debt per capita. That's that 2,000 per person calculation or level that we looked at. This is another example of where lower is better. Your policy level shows up in orange and the same outcome is as you layer on more projects, you inch up closer to your policy level, but for this particular measure, you stay within your benchmark in all cases.
Remind me on this one, Lauren, are we assuming any population growth or are we holding that stat?
Population at two.
At two percent. So we took your census numbers. We have the census numbers that was released last year, earlier this year, but for 2010 and applied a small 2% growth rate assumption going forward.
So it's about 1,200 people? A little bit more.
And also, let's say, this is that net debt. If you look in our audit, it shows over 2,000 because it is including in there the debt that's being paid by road impact, by facilities tax and hotel motel. But in our, in our audit, it shows over 2,000.
And water sewer debt.
No, oh, no, but I'm talking about just the part of it that shows general obligation is over 2,000.
Right.
With water and sewers, it's over 3,000, I believe.
The accounting standards require us to report gross debt, even if it's being supported from impact fees or hotel tax or all those other things. But in doing this calculation, what PFM has done is they've taken out those that are theoretically being funded out by those other non-general fund revenues.
Yeah, as you mentioned on page three, whenever you went through the net debt policy and explained what you were showing.
Right, and that's the information that we reiterate to your rating agencies is where the cash flow and where the funding's coming from. On page 15, it's kind of looking at another policy level is the net debt per cap, I'm sorry, the net per capita debt or the net debt per capita, per capita income, so the ability for us to pay back our portion of the debt. This assumes that population and per capita income grows at 2% annually and you see your policy level at 3% and you, this is another example where the policy.
Lower.
Lower is better. And as you layered on each one of these scenarios, we were within our policy limits for this discussion purpose. On page 16, the last funding metric that we looked at was the net direct debt as a percent of market value or real value. Your policy level is at .8% and that's the orange line. And this is another example where lower is better, or at least in a more positive view. As we layered on these particular scenarios, there are a couple where you fell, several where you came at your policy level or slightly over. So keep that in mind and we do do a quick recap on the next page. And I hate to jump there, but I think it's a little bit easier to follow that in this matrix format as you start diving into the individual scenarios and really how it affected those particular funding affordability ratios. So on page 17 is where we have the summary of taking all the information we're on the previous five slides and putting it in kind of as we've pointed, as the red light, green light version, so you can kind of visually see. When you are above your policy level, it shows up as a red, or if you're in an area where you're close to your policy level, we have it as a yellow. And that occurrence is in scenario two, which is top five with phasing and the net direct debt as a percent of market value. So you see where that yellow pops up there. So it allows you to kind of compare each scenario against one another and these particular affordability ratios when helping looking, making decisions on which scenario you want to explore further.
So you're saying on that net direct debt, when we get to that year 2014, that's where it becomes weak, but not before that?
Right. So if you, if you wanted to take that and then look at where that level is or where it's projected to, you could look at, that one is the scenario.
Which one's that?
Two. And you see that you're right at your policy, just barely over, and that's that top right scenario two graphic, but you immediately, right, after you've layered on the debt, you immediately start paying it off and, you know, falling below your policy level, which is a positive.
I'm going to that scenario five versus four, and it appears, if I'm correct here, five would have more, more, more projects and yet it, scenario four has only three projects, top three.
Four, yeah, four has more construction and fewer projects. Five has more design, next phase, but less construction.
Okay, I was trying to figure it out.
I think it has a phased construction of South Carruthers, but does not have a phased construction of McEwen four. But it advances, does some other things in terms of some additional design. It does that Beasley connector road, so it does some other elements in the staff recommendation.
But it doesn't, does it have building the West Haven fire station?
It does not.
It does not.
It has design only. And neither does scenario four, because the fire station is a priority four, so it's only reflected in your scenarios one and two.
One and two.
In terms of construction of a fire station. We provide for the design of the fire stations in all five scenarios, I think. Well, I guess we didn't, and three and four. Sorry, I misspoke, sorry about that. Yeah, because it fell out.
Not in three and four?
Three, four and five. Then three, four and five.
Not in three and four.
But also not in five.
It's in design, it's in design.
I'm talking about construction.
Right.
Construction is only one of the three.
And obviously, we can do as many scenarios as you want us to do. These we picked as a benchmark to kind of get you started and if there are ways you want to build off of any of these and, you know, add construction of a fire station or take out something and put something in, we can do that, but we wanted to give you a starting point that came off of your priorities generally and then also put our recommendation in that staff had pieced together as well.
Well, this is great because it helps us to focus and we know what will happen by moving a chess piece.
That's right.
And you can look at that top 10 and see what's in and not in some of these. And if you want to ask us to say what happens if we add certain ones or take certain ones out, we can certainly do that.
Those of us who came late, where are the staff recommendations, Margaret?
Yeah, that is slide.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
I have a question that I just looked at.
Go ahead.
This, this page nine says, top 10 priority of projects list as a 62911. Did that include what I have printed out in 912, 2011, the CIP project summary and priority ranking, the calculated priority after the correction of my rankings, you know, because I did them backward and everything? Is that in here or not? I'm wondering, because I don't.
We can double check that.
I know that's what we said. I think both of them had 629 as the heading.
This one has, this one has 912.
Is it the same top 10?
Well, I don't know. Let me just look. I just saw that.
I think it is, but we can, we can double check that.
I've got Nickel Mills and Maury Stasi, those were, those were little projects, I guess.
As far as after, after yours were done, I think.
You think they are?
Top priorities, Eastern Flank, two is South Carruthers, three, McEwen Phase four, four, Fire Station eight, five, Century Court.
Okay, good. So really, really, this, the heading is up there or is not? I didn't notice that until I arrived this minute.
I think that might have been on the spreadsheet we sent to Lauren or whatever, but I think it reflects the priorities.
But I just noticed that right this moment.
I know, I sent the copy that said after.
The other one said after.
Do y'all all still have these that we handed out? Okay, if you need it, just let us know.
We can provide them, yeah.
So where do we go from here?
That's what we were just going to ask.
That's the next question.
Ask me that question too.
I think a huge chessboard out here. I put these scenarios on it and made them green and red and yellow. And then we can just move these pawns around and figure out what looks good.
Or eat the big O where you actually win something.
This has really been good to go back to from the beginning.
Absolutely.
And get us all back into it and everything. So I know it's been very helpful to me.
I guess the next, when Eric asked me what the next step was, I told him I thought this was just getting everybody back up to speed and understanding and making sure we were all on the same page and we kind of understood how to read the graphs and so on. And then, you know, my hope would be that from here, we would be able to go back and look back on the projects and make sure that we have the projects included that we've ranked and wanted and we think are the most needed by the community. And then maybe sometime in January at a retreat, then we can really jump into this a lot deeper.
And we can, we are glad to run different scenarios if you'd like, look at those priorities. These were the priorities as you had them over the summer into the fall. If there are things that for whatever reason have, that you think need to be looked at differently within these scenarios, let us know. We can, these aren't hard for us to adjust to fairly quickly and run some options. I'm also sensitive, Alderman Blanton hasn't prioritized any of these. She probably doesn't want to be thrown into that quite yet, but, you know, I want to make sure we're accurately reflecting what your priorities are and that this is what they were as of late summer into fall, but, you know, we'll adjust however you want to go with these and we can run scenarios as long as you want us to to look at it, or if there's other information you'd like us to show you, we're glad to do it.
I've got one quick question about the per capita income growth. I haven't looked at that as far as projections as part of Wall Street Journal and things of that nature. Is that still pretty much on, you think, a 2% growth?
Well, it's just so hard to say. I mean, the 2% is really kind of static, but just allowing something for inflation. I think when we started, we had the Williamson County numbers and then we compared them to the Bureau of Economic Analysis, so, you know, they never match exactly. So, I mean, we've tried to pick a number that we think is realistic and apply some very modest growth to that. It's really difficult to say as we're coming out of this economy, to know just whether we're going to zig or zag. And that's part of why the staff recommendation is somewhat front-loaded and minimal, because we'll have another chance to come back in a year and look at projects and what these numbers look like again, so.
I hope we can do something within the year.
As do we.
And we would advance some projects and move other projects to the next step in terms of design, be ready to do construction if the capacity's there.
I got.
Go ahead.
Question on the, okay, so the policy level that we have is 33%. And we are currently where, at 46?
Forty-six.
Okay. What's the real numbers of that difference between the 46 and 33 right now? What's the real numbers?
Seven, eight million.
Seven, eight million?
It's probably 11. If you look at a 30, a $50 million.
Seven, what, Lauren?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
It's seven, isn't it?
Yeah, 26 million and is it?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, nine and sixteen and a half.
So the difference in the 46 that we currently are at and our 33% policy would set us about 46 mil?
Oh, no, no, no.
No, no, the 26, 26, I'm sorry, 24.
It's a difference of 6%, right?
Yeah.
6% of.
It's probably around what, 20, 20 something, isn't it?
You use 50 million as a round number.
Oh, 50 million in terms of, that's your reserve level?
No, that's the base, that's the base.
Oh, okay. So 50 million of the base is your base revenues.
Yeah.
And then you have, you want to keep at least 33% of that portion, so that, I wish I had to calculate 33% of 50 million.
See, I can.
You can, well, maybe you.
Sixteen and a half.
I can not do that.
Seventeen, about 16 and two halves.
Sixteen and a half.
You're actually asking the difference between where we are now and the 33%. Is that where you were asking?
No, I just want, we are at 46 right now, percent.
46% or just under 25 million.
Okay, and our policy is 33. So say if we took that and went down to the 33, what number, real number in real life?
That difference.
That's the 7 million. Okay, that's what, okay.
That's it.
More like 8 million.
That's it.
It's not that much. I mean, but it's 7 million.
Say 4 million to that.
It's actually 8 million.
No, 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 that's including that.
We've already done that. That's already factored into everything else.
Seven million is not a lot.
We can only save it once.
I have two. I'm going to take it every time I bring it up.
Two what?
Two counts, two what?
Two what, teeth, for Christmas?
You'll bring back home. But the fact is, though, that our second priority, Hillsborough Road, is still not done. So whenever we're talking about trying to get something done in a year, we've been three years and we still don't have that done. And that was our second priority from the very beginning.
And that's why the orange line kept going.
That's right.
And some projects are able to move quicker than others. It sort of depends on which ones, and we can, if you want to focus in on specific projects, David can probably run down that at some point and give you which ones are more ready to go than others. And primarily, design and right of way is what eats up a lot of time. And in particular, Hillsborough, we've got 60-plus parcels of right of way that we've got to deal with and that just takes time, especially complicated by the fact that we've got essentially federal money that's come through the state and it's part of the project as well. So that makes that project more protracted. Others, we're more in control of our destiny and can probably move more quickly on because they're locally funded only projects.
My other comment was that the benefit to going through all of this, I think, is even when we were looking at our priorities, we did not have the PFM projections about what we would do to those benchmarks. And I think that has been, besides going back and reviewing it all, that's been the other part that's been helpful here. We're looking to see what those projects that we prioritize would do to our benchmarks.
Everybody good? Want to ask you one question?
Sure.
On these, these projections on multi-year things, like, there's so much design in scenario five, so are these projections also factoring, you know, two, three years of design and then entering into the project phase?
No.
There's no expenditure at all?
No, no building.
Just the design, take them to the next steps.
Except for South Carruthers.
The numbers that are on this page, that's what's included, whatever year that falls out in, that's what it is.
And South Carruthers was mentioned, I'll tell you, on that one, we've already acquired the right of way.
Yeah.
Correct? And we've completed the design. So we're, the next step is construction on that project. So others aren't quite to that stage yet. We're trying to get McEwen four, as an example, to that stage so that we can more accurately look at phasing options as well. So that was part of the staff thinking and advancing some of those projects too, while trying to live within what the capacity model might have shown us. And we were really looking at this, kind of the savings or choices that had been made between the previous funding plan and now too, as a basis for that as well, so.
Yeah, you know where I am, I want to get Phase four done yesterday.
No.
No, I went back for Christmas. Actually, but we've got, we've got Carruthers, South Carruthers already ready to go. It's ready to be built. And what's the cost on that, about 3 mil?
The two lanes for the phasing that we looked at was three and a half to 3.6 million.
Yeah. Yeah, so we get stuff like that, that I'm, you know, I'm not opposed to trying to
Two, three, sixes, correct, I think that's actually 7.2 million.
Was that for four?
No.
Can't be that much.
No, it was three points some, well, Chris is here, what?
We're only half of the
We can verify that.
I think it's a bigger number than we originally thought.
Okay, because that's significant, that's almost double.
The whole thing in the CIP was 13 and change.
We did it out, I mean, again, we actually did it out based on two plans, and about three and a half million dollars, I did hear that $7 million, pounds around, but I think that's, I think that's a pretty high number.
So, okay, but that's ready to go.
It shows on here, a lot more, shows on here, a lot more.
We updated our engineering estimates, so we'd have to look at those together, yeah.
We need to do that, we need to, Chris, and what the, we don't know what the cost of that design is for McEwen, do we?
Do what?
Cost of the design for McEwen.
Put in 680.
What was that, six?
Six eighty.
I think we had, we had some preliminary proposals for completion, but that will change a little bit based on the time that we go into.
So Mr. Mayor, you recommend that we come back in some type of retreat in January?
That's what I'm hoping. And for Brandy, she's got to fight it to rank hers.
I'll be more of that.
I'm a graduate, I'll take the highest.
That's on the east side.
And maybe set a deadline for yourself for two weeks in your mind, if you want to make some comments or different scenarios or different assumptions or
Could we get through Christmas?
Please, please, can we get through Christmas?
January, the, do it with the next board meeting.
January 10th is our next, if you want, we'll leave and look at how the agenda lays out, if we want to provide a little bit of time to follow up on this. Without doing a full-blown presentation, yeah, we've got CIP on January 12th, so we can use the 10th or the 12th, and if you're comfortable with us setting, sort of gauging the agendas, we'll let you know how that might fit.
Can you do two of these things at the same time? Can we do two, do they have to do?
Two of what?
Two of these projects, can they be done at the same time?
One, two, three.
Sure.
Well, that's what they're saying.
We do one and two to get at the same time.
Sure.
And four and five.
Ideally.
Yeah, it really depends on how much money you're ready to spend on any of them, really, honestly.
Once you decide what you're going to allow us to spend money on, we will start each project that has money committed, whatever that phase is.
The last time we met and talked about Third Avenue North, you said that, what did you say?
Third Avenue
Out of what you say nowadays.
Third Avenue North, we had to go back and do appraisals on the properties due to meeting the T-DOT requirements. We were through with the appraisals, we paid more money, actually, we just found out from the initial appraisal, but keep in mind, to meet T-DOT requirements, we have to do an appraisal, we have to do a review appraisal, we're in the review appraisal process right now, shouldn't take very long, another week, I think, or something.
But at least based on the appraisals.
But based on the appraisals, we paid more money for the properties than what they're appraising out to be, so we will be free and clear as far as continuing on, just got to get the T-DOT approvals, et cetera, but again, we got to get the review appraisal before we submit it to T-DOT.
Don't we do that before we do Hillsborough Road?
Not necessarily.
But they have to be done together?
They, we need to, we need to try to, it would be better if we could get the intersection of the Third Avenue extension set up and ready as we're doing Hillsborough Road, yes, it could be done at the same time, but it, because we are changing where that intersection comes in.
And phasing, though, we're saying we have to get the, what'd you say, from where to Mack Hatcher done as phase one, is the first phase?
It's all cheek.
Cheek, that's right, thank you.
Well, with Mack Hatcher funding kind of slipping, Mack Hatcher extension funding, we're still in the process of trying to figure out how things, we may have to actually go back and, it's complicated because of the Mack Hatcher, Hillsborough Road, all that stuff, if you remember, we took out part of Hillsborough Road to add to the Mack Hatcher because this time last year, Mack Hatcher was going to be done first, well, it appears the funding for Mack Hatcher is not going to be done, and we might be able to do Hillsborough Road first, so we'll have to pull back and redo that. It's not that time-consuming, we don't think, but it's just how we end up packaging the projects for getting them going. The biggest problem we will have with that is, we have to work out how we're going to pay for the utility relocations.
And we will see some completion in 2012, maybe complete maintenance, will we be done with that?
Oh, in terms of our, will be started?
Started.
Yeah, I would estimate that's a year to year and a half project.
Before we get in?
Before we're up and operating, yeah. We've got to build a road, we've got to do some adjustments to the facilities themselves to make them, kind of fit them for our needs, but that's the estimate we're putting on it right now, we're just getting the design team together, working with us, to do more specific design, so that's
I thought we already had worked out the scheme for the electrical overhead, are there other utilities?
On Hillsborough?
On Hillsborough Road, we have the scheme worked out, the problem is, we had to work with T-DOT concerning electrical at Mack Hatcher, because they were going to have it relocated overhead as part of the Mack Hatcher project when they took that, we're doing it underground, so there's a conflicting issue there, we had worked out, I think, pretty well, but then, to finish out underground and goes beyond the limits for the Hillsborough Road, if we go back and add some of this stuff to the Hillsborough Road because of Mack Hatcher being after Hillsborough, if you understand what I'm saying, I hope I'm making it clear, because we were only going up to, we were only going up to, basically where you have the five-lane section, direct intersection of Mack Hatcher with the Hillsborough Road project, to do all the undergrounding, to take care of what we need to do, we need to go on the north side of that intersection to get all the utility relocations done to be able to do the Hillsborough Road and be ready for the Mack Hatcher. So we have another several hundred feet we have to do stuff.
When it crosses Mack Hatcher too, though, right?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Does it cross on the east side or west side of Hillsborough?
The electrical, be on both sides, probably.
Gee, gee, okay, we need to get a report on that sometime soon, but not, don't talk to us now.
Well, I understand, and we're trying to keep you as informed as we can on this, but it's just, it's just an issue that changes and could change back again depending on what funding comes out of T-DOT, so that's the issue that is, we got to get that funded.
Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas.
Great lady.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.